I haven't looked at the faculty yet, but I'm calling all else.
Okay. Kevin, I'm going to call the meeting to order.
You're welcome.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of April 13th, 2023, Town and Fishville Planning Board Meeting to Order at 7:02 PM. And would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We move to the Plan of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll make the normal requests to silent cell phones so that the meeting doesn't get interrupted. And everyone, please speak into the microphones as well as you can. I've got some allergies this evening, so I'm going to try to speak directly into the microphone in case my voice starts giving out, but I'll see what I can do. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five. We currently have five voting members present, and as far as I know, Felix Lopez is supposed to be here. But we have one absent member, Robbie Ladara, so I would like to appoint Kevin O'Connell as a voting member for tonight's meeting, if that's all right.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes. Board to approve and adopt the February 9th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. I had sent nonsubstantive corrections to the planning office earlier. And so I'm wondering if any board members have any other corrections to the minutes?
No.
If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the February 9th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. I guess we're at six to zero at this point. Okay. Thanks. All right. Our first agenda item of the evening is Duchess Storage, Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan, formerly known as Keep Smart Self-Storage. The applicant seeks special use permit approval. This is going to be a long one, but I'm going to read the whole introduction from the agenda. Site Special Use Permit Approval and Site Development Plan Approval of Constructed Climate Controlled Self-Storage Facility on the former Keep Smart Self-Storage Facility Parcels. Two buildings are to be constructed in two phases. Phase one will consist of construction of Building One, a 97,275-square-foot, two-and-a-half-story structure. And Phase two will consist of the construction of Building Two and 18,150-square-foot, two-and-a-half-story structure. 117 parking spaces are required pursuant to town code, and 51 parking spaces are provided, of which 34 are proposed to be landbanked, and four loading zones are required pursuant to the town code, and 10 loading zones are proposed. The parcels for this proposal are located at 1574 Route 52, that one consisting of 1.99 acres in the GB General Business Zone, and the other parcel located at 1576 Route 52, consisting of 0.785 acres in the GB General Business Owning District. So tonight, we're here to refer the application to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District for their review and comment. And the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of the application. So, welcome to the new applicant. Good to see you. And if you could just kind of give us an overview of what is being proposed. I think the planning board is aware of it, but for especially the benefit of the audience. Also, I'll just mention the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit. So, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean for the applicant, 1574 Route 52 Florida Realty LLC. I'm joined tonight by our project team, including Mark Day, our site engineer, and also our project representatives from the ownership, Joe Langen and Michael Houghton. This project may be familiar to some of the board members, but we have a new ownership team now, and that's why Mr. Houghton and Mr. Langen are here tonight. Mr. Day is going to walk us through and provide an overview of the site plan. What I wanted to do was just walk back to where this project was before. This project, which is for 150,000 square feet in two buildings of a self-storage climate-controlled facility at the intersections of Route 52 and 82, was before this board back in 2016. You held public hearings, received staff comments, referred to the agencies, and received comments from those agencies. Revisions were made to the plans. Public hearings held. And then in July of 2017, the planning board issued a secret negative declaration finding that the project would not have a significant adverse environmental impact. And then in November of 2017, the special use permit and the site plan for the project was issued. Very similar to the project, substantially the same project that is before this board tonight. Our client then proceeded to satisfy the conditions of the site plan approval, was issued a building permit in July of 2018, a grading permit as well, undertook the construction of the work that was worked on to regrade the site, bring fill into the site, and also pour the foundation. And then due to a combination of the pandemic as well as some financial difficulties, the project did not continue or proceed despite the efforts of the applicant at that time. And the site plan approvals and the building permit lapsed. And so because they lapsed, were backed before the board for, in essence, reapproval of the previously approved special use permit and site plan for a self-controlled storage facility at this property. As I said, there's been no material differences to the plan other than to reflect the existing conditions because the grade of the site has changed and the foundation was poured. But the number of parking spaces and the buildings remain the same. And so with that, I'm just going to ask Mr. Day to provide us with an overview of the site plan. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Day, Day in Stokosa. As Mr. Ward Willis pointed out, the project was started. What you see here is the existing conditions plan, which is in effect a survey that was prepared for the conditions that are out in the field as they are today. The project that is being proposed is, in essence, the same project that was approved years ago. The only change that we anticipate is that we would like to connect to Town Water, which at the time this application had been approved, we did not have the ability to do. But now we're going to, we'd like to seek that. Right now, as you see the project, pardon me. I'm going to stay right here. The project is, again, two buildings. The main building, which was actually, had begun construction. It's about a 97,000-square-foot, two-and-a-half-story. The other building's about 18,000 square feet. It's on the east side of what's shown as the creek. We are not proposing any material changes of any kind for the project other than what I had mentioned with the water. This project did have Board of Health approval for a small septic system up by Route 52 or 80, yeah, 52. The access that was originally shown on the site plan was on the west end. We had conceptual approval from the DOT. And the reason we actually had to move it as close as we could to the existing building to the east, west side, because of the proximity to the intersection. We're not proposing any lighting changes. We're not adding any parking. We're not landscaping, and everything will be as it was when it was originally approved. The grading was done for the foundation it's in. This site was in a floodplain, but that's been, was removed during the last application. There will be two stream crossings, one in the back of the main building and one in the front, which were approved. It's a Class D stream. It's mainly in a drainage swale for the subdivision to the north. We did an analysis of that stream and, per the town engineer's request at the time, to prove that we were not going to impact anything that we were doing on the site. We also got approval from the railroad for use of their culvert, which in effect was to prove that we were not adversely impacting their existing culvert. And with that, if there's any questions about the project, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do you happen to have the architectural drawings available to put up on the screen? That might be good just to remind the board about that and then to maybe indicate for...
Mr. Keith Schofield from York, Texas?
All righty. So Keith Schofield, provided in front of you is, there were two scenarios, I believe. I was unavailable to attend the meeting for the preliminary. The first one, the main footprint still remains the same, so we tried to take a different approach and give the building a little bit more of a historic feel with the cornices and everything along the top compared to what the previously approved design was. This current facade that you see on the top would be the side-facing Route 52. The color scheme was in the gray-tone family. There was, the stonework along the bottom was picking up the same color tones of the new monument that's out at the intersection. The metal panel system is a light gray. The, what you see on this bumped out as darker gray colors is supposed to represent a pewter color. And these are metal panel systems made by Metalspan, which is a manufacturer for pre-engineered storage buildings. The top and the, there's brick pilasters, which is also called, it's an EPIS-performed brick to look like natural brick, but it's installed with adhesives and mortar instead of the weight of a full-faced brick. And so the drive-it company manufactures this product. So in conjunction with that, the top cornice work and all the decorative work along the top will be an EPIS product, and we'll have that color tone also. There was a second series of elevations provided. And I'll see if I can figure out how to... No, I just want to, is there a way of increasing size?
No, that's as big as you're going to get.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're limited.
All right, sure. So let me just show you this last page here. There was, there was an alternative, instead of a gray brick, to go back to a more traditional red brick. And that is what you would see on these pilasters that kind of frame the corners of every jog along the facade. And so the pilasters are also given an option. If it wasn't the red brick that was accepted, it would be a gray, a darker gray. This is a copy of the stonework. Again, it's not as easily to see without blowing up. The darker panels on the facades are this color here. The lighter panels, this light stone color here. And the cornice would be this color here. This is also an EPIS product, and that acts as a base for the brick pilasters that go up the corners. So those are the selection of color choices that we have for you. So there's what you see basically with this scenario, which is the gray version, and this scenario, which has the red brick on the corners. I can answer whatever questions you may have.
So they're going to use the existing foundation that's there now?
Correct.
There, okay.
Yeah, basically, the same forms and jigs and jogs that you see along the front facade are basically going to remain. What we did differently from the original version to this version was where the bumpouts are is how we articulate the top parts to make them look a little more kind of historic, but also try to pick up the feel of a warehouse kind of older feel to it.
And only the Phase One building foundation had been constructed on the site so far, right? Well, does anyone have any questions so far on either the architecture? Or if you want, we can get back to the site plan and some of the other site aspects?
No.
Yeah, I'll just expand a little on the fact that this area is an important gateway to the town and probably even more so now with the statue of Daniel Nimam erected at that Arrowhead intersection of Route 52 and 82. And also, I think we mentioned at our pre-app meetings that the town is in the process and just about completed with our comprehensive plan update, which even further strengthens the need to protect and enhance the gateway entrances. So we had actually, at our first pre-application meeting, asked the applicant to bring in some drawings like this to show how the site could, how the building in particular could address the historic and aesthetic character of that corridor in that location. So this is where we are right now. Any questions so far? Actually, I don't want to get into too much detail because tonight we're really just going to focus on accepting the application and referring it, and then we'll get into some more detail next month at the May meeting.
Understood.
But I did want to expand a little on the town's Historic and Cultural Resources map, which was done in conjunction with a relatively recent amendment to the town code. It includes both the Daniel Nimam site and also the historic Brinkerhoff Inn is across Route 52 from this location. So those should probably be reflected in the environmental assessment form just as additional resources to consider. I think there is a mention of the Daniel Nimam statue in there. Let's see, what else? Yeah, could you, maybe we'll get back to the question of the water main extension, Mark. You did tell us about the desire to hook up to it at our pre-app meetings, and just wondering whether there have been any early discussions or finding out any more information about that?
No, we haven't, we haven't made a request to Town Board yet.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be a really good idea if it can be, if it can work out.
I don't know if the board remembers, but there was a sizable concrete tank that's actually in that foundation. That's, its purpose was to serve for sprinkler storage for fire, for fire flow, fire volume. And that's why we're, we'd like to, we'd like to connect to Town Water to kind of simplify that quite a bit.
And as we move forward with the process, I guess the full environmental assessment form would have to be amended to address that as well once we find out some more details about it. All right. Well, I know this hasn't been referred to our attorney or engineer yet, but do either of you have any questions or anything follow-up to our pre-application meetings that you attended?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we go and consider a motion to accept the application? Oh, wait, no. First, we're going to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak informally to this matter. So why don't we do that? Why don't we see if there is anyone who would like to make informal comments on the Duchess Storage Facility proposal? If there are any such people, just raise your hand so we can see if you're interested. And I don't see anybody. So now we will move along to see if there is a motion to accept the application for the proposed Duchess Storage Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan located at 1574 and 1576 Route 52, and to refer this application to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District for their review and comment.
I'll make that motion. And I guess at the same time, I think it'd be helpful to have a rendering in future submittals. But I know there was a landscaping plan as well. I think it'd be very helpful to the board.
I think it should all be in there.
I saw the...
Yeah, should be.
With the... Okay, I didn't see that page, but, okay. I saw the architectural elevations. Didn't see the...
Yeah, actually, is there a rendering, sort of like a bird's eye type of view of it on the site showing Route 52 and a little bit of the surrounding area? That might be a worthwhile thing to add to the...
I'm sorry, you wanted a site plan? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, we were just wondering if it would be possible, if there isn't already a rendering of the building done that kind of would be more like a bird's eye overview of the site with the building, you know...
You mean like a ISO?
Yeah. So if there isn't one done, it might be a worthwhile thing to do one and submit that to the board just to get a better idea of how it kind of fits in with the neighborhood. So if it's possible to have that at the next meeting, that would be great. If not, that's okay.
It might be tough. Those aren't, those take a little bit, I don't want to speak out of school, but they take a little bit of time.
All right. Oh, so I don't think we had a second yet on the motion?
Second?
All right, Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. So again, we'll have a more complete discussion at the May 11th meeting. And that normally we automatically put on the agenda unless for some reason you indicate that that wouldn't work out for you. But that's...
I'm sorry, what was the date?
So that's May 11th. And normally, you wouldn't be expected to submit anything beyond what you've already submitted. But again, if you do have...
Yeah, if we could put a rendering together, and we're going to, we'll give it a whirl.
Okay. All righty.
Is there a particular direction you'd like to see it come from?
I don't know. Anthony, do you have anything in mind?
Yeah, I guess from, I guess from the front.
And, and, and to one side?
From across on 52, the outside of 52.
Ideally showing maybe something that would be kind of from the angle that would be in line with the...
From the 82 to the corner?
Yeah, like in line with the statue of Nimam, you know, kind of at that angle.
We don't see the building. The statue's all the way.
Based in southwest.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Well, if the angle doesn't work out too good from, exactly from the statue area a little bit, you know, further, most is good. Okay.
All right.
And, yeah, so we'll, at the next meeting, we'll get into things like declaring our intent to be lead agency and all that kind of stuff.
Is there anything you want to say?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Don't go too far.
All right. Our first full project review tonight is 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52. Site development plan, special use permit, and floodplain development permit. Board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 29th, 2023. And again, we have Joe Burger, our conflict engineer, sitting in with us for this application. Welcome, Joe. And welcome again to the applicant.
Good evening.
So, yeah, if you would like to just give us a brief update on the recent submission that you sent in?
Sure. So the biggest change to the site plan itself was the elimination of the one entrance and egress in front of the fuel dispensing canopy and the addition of some plantings to the west side, additional plantings along the drive-through. Other than that, those were the most major design changes for the site. And if you want to talk about anything else, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, one thing, I did look at the landscaping plan and noticed there have been some additions of plantings on the site. I think you indicated in your cover letter that there could be further discussions with state DOT on whether or not, for instance, some small street trees might be able to be placed at the site's frontage as long as they didn't block any of the site distances on Route 52. So that's something...
Correct. And to date, we haven't received any comments back from them. So I'll follow up again with our engineer to see if we can have a timeline for that.
One other thing I was going to ask about, I saw that there were bike rack details, which was suggested by our board and the county planning department. The county had recommended an inverted U-type bike rack, which seems to work well from their experience. And they've had, they've kind of put together some standards and design guidelines for these types of things. So if it's possible to change that bike rack detail to an inverted U-type, that...
We could, we could look into it. This is just a product that we've carried over from other sites. We've had no complaints to date, so... But if that's the preference, I'm sure that's not a big deal to change.
Okay, sure. Why don't you look into it and see if it's possible? All right. Well, for now, why don't we ask Mr. Burger to summarize your engineering memo that was dated April 6th, 2023?
Good evening. Just in summary, basically, I broke down all the comments and all the review. And they've complied with pretty much, they've complied with everything that we've asked them to do. The few things that are left are not engineering is the landscaping, as you've discussed, the issues with the deed, which I defer to the attorney, and the DOT, which is really deferred over to DOT. They have reduced the entrance to one. And Planning Board's input to DOT if needed to, to... board's input to DOT if needed to, to provide what the town wants, but other than that, what I just want to point out, it was on the plan, just want to point out that the sign needs variance, the applicant has acknowledged that and has placed it on the, the plan, that they will be seeking a variance for a larger sign, a sign that will be a little taller and different than what's on the code. So I just want to make note of that, that's related to the point of observation.
I did notice that the sign was moved back somewhat from the street frontage a little bit.
Correct. So it'll be at that 15 feet, and then we'll be submitting for the larger sign in front of the ZBA.
Right.
Yeah, 15 was per code.
Joe, I was going to ask you if you had any comments on the county health department letter that we received, dated March 29th, 2023? There were a couple of things in there. They mentioned, talking about arrangements for a water supply.
So we, we reached out to our engineer, they're going to reach out to the county, looks like they're treating this as one site, so we just wanted to let them know that this is two sites still.
Yeah.
The convenience store parcel will be connecting to the public water supply and sewer supply once those are made ready. So we, you know, by the time we're done building, we'll hope that those are already in place for us to make those connections, and then at a later date, you know, at the discretion of the property owner, to connect to the public water and sewer, but they still plan on using their private well and septic for, for the time being.
That's for the existing building, not the new one.
Correct, yes.
That's how I saw it, it's two different uses, one's unseptic and well, the other's being connected to the sewer and water system.
Correct.
Separate uses.
Yep.
So either...
I think the health department is thinking of it as one.
So do you, either of you have any concerns that the health department may still look at it differently even when they find out they're two separate parcels?
No, they should acknowledge that, and the applicant should be addressing that with them and getting that resolved, which corresponds back to the board, so the board can rely on that.
Okay.
I'm sure that's something that's easily done.
Correct, yes.
To just follow up on paperwork, like it's a be, I would recommend that would be something similar to getting the DOT approval, getting the health department to acknowledge that the two separate uses, and one's just staying the way it is, so there's no change needed.
Correct.
And the other new use that you're proposing is going into the sewer and water system.
So if...
But that would be a letter from the health department back to the town saying it's okay, whether they decide to call it a approval stamp or a no comment letter.
Okay.
Both are possible from them, we really can't determine, but we can get whatever they will say has, and you'll be receiving that before or as a condition of approval that you're legally granting.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, if it was, if timing became a question regarding our approvals, then we certainly could include it as a condition.
Yes.
Okay.
As, I'm sure there will be some other conditions, probably DOT as well, because the DOT permit can't really be issued until the site plan's approved and the contract is chosen, so there's going to be some conditions based on the DOT permit as well.
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Brad, you, oh, you were just saying no? Okay. Bob, anything?
The existing garage, that's the building that's going to remain?
Correct, yes.
The house is coming down?
Yes.
All right, so the water that's going to be on the well and the septic is regarding that garage owner?
Correct, they're, they're completely separate as it is now, so there is no cross connection between the two parcels. So again, we're going to get a letter from the, the health department to, you know, what, what they determined, but we're going to, you know, make our case that they're still two parcels, and let them know that there is no cross connection as it exists today.
Is there a reason he doesn't want to hook into the water?
How many, how many, how many entrances do you have left after removing the one that you just removed?
So there's one entrance to Route 52, ingress and egress, and then ingress, egress to Party Lane, which is a private road.
Okay, so then out Party Lane, back to 52.
Correct.
The 52 will be ingress, enter, and exit, right?
Correct, yep.
Typically.
Are you going to have like an aisle in the between for traffic situations going in and out of that lane, or?
Uh, from, from Route 52?
From Route...
Yes, it's, it's been, I forget the, the width of it, I believe it's 30 feet? About, about 35 feet, ingress, egress.
Okay, and, and are they, is the egress going to be able to turn both ways?
As we have it now? Uh, yes.
Dominic, do you have any questions or comments so far?
No, you know, Joe had raised the issue of the cross easements, but the cross easements, I think, have been acknowledged by the applicant, and notes shown on the plan, and if and when, you know, it gets to a point where there's an approval by this board, one of the conditions of that approval would be submission of final documents for preparing those cross easements, which, you know, I think should wait at this point, and would typically be a condition of any approval.
Okay. One additional thing that I had noted, we had asked to see more details of the gas pump canopy extension, and in particular, how, you know, basically how the whole new canopy is going to look and fit in with the site, and how the lighting is going to...
Okay, you want the construction details from the manufacturer?
Sure, if that's possible.
Okay, yes, I mean, they take a little time to get from them, but it's not, you know, that's not unreasonable.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be anything that would hold us up on, I think, maybe our next steps, we can talk about in a second, but...
Mr. Chair, you probably want not just the construction documents, but the elevation, how it looks, looks, right?
Yeah.
Because they provide the elevation as well.
They do, yeah, foundation.
You have to ask for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't want to, the construction typically is looking straight down, the elevation's what you really want to see.
Yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, are they going to do anything with the existing tanks? Are they going to be expanded at all?
Are you going to do anything with the existing tanks? Are they going to be expanded?
Um, we don't, I believe we have plans on that now. The, the tanks, they've been, they got plenty of time left on them.
Yeah, we still got, no, 10 years.
Okay.
I didn't know if they were going to be expanded, if you're going to...
No, no plans to expand, or replace at this moment.
So, the plan where it has classified this proposal as an unlisted action, that was actually back in January, and we distributed our notice of intent, intent to serve as lead agency, that was circulated on February 8th, so the 30-day window for that has expired about a month ago, actually. So I guess my question to the board is, and I'll ask for some input from our consultants, is would it be appropriate to schedule a public hearing for the May 11th meeting on this proposal? Which if necessary, could always be continued to the June 8th meeting, as we do from time to time, but any ideas on that? How about, Joe, what do you think at this point?
I think they're ready, yes. And it'd be helpful if they could have that elevation for the meeting, but...
That's true.
These canopies are kind of standard details.
Yeah, some usually have them.
Yeah, if we don't get the exact site-specific one.
Typically put out.
I mean, the heights won't change, and then the, the elevations are pretty much...
I think the public would want to see that, so...
Okay. So what we could do is, if the board is okay with this, we could, you know, schedule it for that meeting. Sometimes if parts of the application aren't ready for the public hearing, we can simply table the public hearing and leave it open until the following month. But I think at this point, it might be a good idea to try to get this moving along a little bit, and see if you could get those materials in time. Debbie, what's the submission date for the May 11th meeting?
Uh, that would be April 26th.
So that gives you almost two weeks to get those in. So, any, any comments from board members? You think it's, we're ready?
I believe so.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the 1556 to 1562 Route 52 Site Development Plan, Special Use Permit and Flood Plane Development Permit for the May 11th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as possible? Some moves?
Second.
Felix moves it. Brad seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we have that public hearing at least set for that date, and we'll see how that goes. Public hearing signs, we need to identify locations, probably one at the existing site entrance on Route 52, and one at the existing entrance on Party Lane.
Is there a template for that?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I'm not sure about this question, but I'll ask it anyway. What about authorizing our engineer to prepare a draft environmental assessment form, Parts Two and Three, and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the May 11th meeting? Do you think that would be appropriate to at least have those available for that meeting, and then again, see how the public hearing goes?
Absolutely, for the board to consider, sure.
Okay. So, any thoughts on that from the board?
I'd agree with that.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
That was Fred?
It was Fred.
That was Fred. And is there a second?
Second.
Who, that was Kevin, okay. My ears are tricking me right now. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we'll, we hopefully will see you back at the May 11th meeting.
Sounds good, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Thanks, Joe.
Good night. Thank you.
And the next application under project reviews is West Edge South Storage Site Development Plan and Flood Plane Development Permit, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 29th, 2023. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening.
If you could just give us an update on the plans that were most recently submitted?
Sure.
And then we can discuss that.
Kyle Ahern with LaBella Associates, also here tonight, some familiar faces for you guys, Neil Alexander, Captain Patel, and Bobby Patel as well. So I was last here in, with our initial submission, that would have been back in November, I believe, but this project was last before you guys, back in, at the February meeting. At that time, from a site plan standpoint, it's going to look very familiar, really a couple minor changes. So at the last meeting, one of the items that was identified as something that the board wanted to see, that we had held off on as a result of some of the discussions we had with the planning board about some of the environmental constraints. So until those were more, you know, coordinated with the, with the planning board, and we got more feedback from you guys on those constraints, we were holding off on the architectural elevations and renderings that were submitted in this last round. So, as I said, those were submitted, they're on the screen here. It remains a four-story structure. One of the minor changes that you'll notice since the last time we were here is there was previously a third and fourth floor cantilever that was proposed just to the left of the office there. That was proposed to try and maintain some of the square footage for the facility, that was lost when we went to this, this different footprint from the building that was originally submitted. The architect gave some feedback, essentially the cost to construct that additional square footage just did not, did not pan out economically, it just wasn't, wasn't viable. So the result is, obviously, there is no more cantilever, and the gross square footage for the building is reduced from 75,124 square feet to the latest iteration is 71,524 square feet. Also, as a result of that cantilever not being on that southeast corner any longer, there's also a slight increase to the rear setback, so it goes from 86.8 feet to 89.9 feet. The other main thing that was undertaken since that February meeting, the board had some concerns, and the county planning department also provided some comments on, well, the county's letter was originally on the water course buffer disturbance, same as last time we were here before you did the board, those water course buffer disturbances are no longer proposed, there, there's zero disturbance proposed within any of the water course buffer, zero disturbance to the wetlands, as has been the case since the beginning. So at this point, the, the concerns from the board were essentially providing an analysis that we hadn't provided yet was, which was the potential impacts to the floodplain. So after that February meeting, we got, we downloaded some DEC data that they had available, it was, you know, 20-something pages of, of data that we, you know, downloaded, got it into correct format, so we could actually create some cross-sections at the project site, because DEC's data only, you know, they only analyze a certain number of cross-sections throughout the, you know, the length of the Fishkill Creek. So we're able to create those cross-sections, put it into profile view, so we could illustrate for you guys the, essentially, the project site, and how that relates to the overall floodplain. So if we bring that up here. All right, so you hear, see here, let me zoom in a little bit. All right, that's, that's as good as we're going to get it, apparently. So, it's not going to let me do that. All right, well, you can see here, kind of the struggle with this analysis is, we want to show, demonstrate, illustrate that the, the site is a small portion of the overall floodplain. In doing that, you know, you also end up at a scale that's, it's, you know, it's almost too, too small to even see what's going on with the profile, but I'll, but I'll walk you through it. So the, the top of the page is the plan view, everything that is shaded, that light gray color, is the overall floodplain, the darker gray color is the project site disturbance, and you can see within that dark gray area, there is a dark black outline, that's the building itself. So, and the, the crosshatching to the west of the building there, that is the floodway. So you can see, there's, there's no disturbance within the floodway itself, the floodway is specifically regulated by FEMA, there's additional requirements as far as no rise in floodplain elevations if you are within that floodway. We are outside the floodway, so then the, then it becomes a question of what, what are the impacts? So for the analysis, we, we took these cross-sections, and the, the lower part of this plan is, is those cross-sections. There's two cross-sections that we, that we made, so that's why there's, there's two different cross-sections there. One of them goes directly through the building, and the other one goes essentially just north of the building, through the wetlands that are to the north of the, the main disturbance area on the site. And those profiles show, you know, we are essentially a blip within the floodplain, is, is the way to describe it. But then we also, you guys recently reviewed another project in the vicinity of this project site, so we kind of did a comparison within our summary. Let's bring that up. All right, I don't think it's open at the moment, or I'm just missing it, but, but I'll just, I'll just summarize it for you guys. So, within the, the summary portion of that, of that memo, it does a quick comparison to the, the warehouse down at the, by the Home Depot there, that was recently approved. So, our project results in 6,750 yards of fill material within the floodplain. The, the warehouse project is 96,500 yards of fill, and that project had about a three-inch impact on the floodplain. That project was also 26 acres of disturbance within the floodplain, whereas ours is 1.3 acres. So just to do, you know, a quick comparison between the two, you know, the, the impacts to the floodplain, for this, you know, this project is significantly less, you know, less than 10% of the, of the impacts related to that warehouse. That warehouse also is not within the floodway. But, you know, neither, neither is this project, like I said. So that, that was submitted for your review. We do have to do a, you know, the next step for that is the floodplain permit, so that will be submitted, but we wanted to get that, you know, comparison and summary over to you guys to take a look at. So then, just to go back to some of the other, not necessarily changed from the last time we were here, but just to give a quick summary of where we're at with some of the other agencies and reviews. SHPO, as you know, had no inverse impacts letter that they had, they had provided a couple months ago. The DOT has requested a copy of the SWIP, once that is prepared, otherwise they have no, no approvals that they require. And that SWIP, similar to the architectural renderings and elevations, once we have, you know, come to an agreement with the planning board on the site plan, then we can, you know, put that SWIP together and, and take the rest of the, you know, the lighting and the landscaping, take all that stuff, get it into a complete package, and get that submitted to the town. And the SWIP to the DOT in, in that case. DEC, as you know, had no, found no impacts to the timber rattlesnakes. The DOH, we had identified as a interested agency due to the water and sewer connections. As a result of some project changes, their approval is no longer required, but they did have some items that they had brought up in their letter. That will, those will still be addressed with, you know, to the town and the village's satisfaction. And I will note, just last night, I received some documentation from West Edge regarding the 500 West Edge approval through the DOH, so it's my understanding that some of the comments that were raised in their letter was actually, you know, looked at back with 500 West Edge, and we'll just have to go back, go through the documentation, and just make sure we're being consistent. County planning, their comments related to the water course buffer are no longer applicable because we have removed that disturbance. Their comments about the floodplain, we believe we've addressed with this most recent analysis. And then they had some additional comments, I think mostly related to lighting, so when we, you know, complete the lighting plan and everything else with this complete site plan package, that will be, those comments will, will also be addressed, and make sure, we'll make sure we incorporate those. So that's kind of the, oh, the, with, just to note, the, with the architecture, there was signage shown on that building. We are permitted two signs with 65 square feet, based on building length and distance from the road, there's a couple, you know, additional square footages, you're allowed for that. We are, actually, let me bring that back up. We are going to be requesting, based on the angle of the building from West Edge itself, we think it makes the most sense to have two signs on the corner of the building there, but we would like to have a sign facing 84. Not going to be a huge amount of visibility from 84 during some of the year, basically leaf-on conditions, but there will be some visibility, especially with, you know, leaf-off conditions, so we would like to have a sign there in addition to the two in the front. So we will be requesting a variance for that. That third sign also will push us over the 65 square feet, so it'll be, the square footage of the, of the overall signage, we'll also be requesting a variance for. I think that's all I have. Any, any feedback? I'd love to answer any questions you guys have.
Could, could I just please ask you to again talk to the two sections that you did, that you alluded to earlier?
Yes.
And what they portended for you?
Cross-section.
Yeah.
Now that we're focusing on the cross-section, so I'll focus, or I'll zoom in, excuse me, here in a minute, but just, you know, so if you look at each cross-section, left to right is, corresponds to the cross-section. So this is a cross-section here, goes from, and, you know, we actually aren't even showing the full extents of the floodplain in these cross-sections, because then it would be even more zoomed out, and you really wouldn't be able to see anything. But the section starts here within the floodplain, so, you know, you have the rest of the floodplain here, that continues on, there were, you know, no impacts within. And then it goes east from there to the creek, Clove Creek itself, with the floodway is here, and then the cross-section continues across, this is the wetland I was talking about, just north of the building. This is the site entrance, where it connects in with the existing pavement at 600 West Edge, which is the Optum. And then it continues, you know, this is 500 West Edge beyond that. And then again, we stopped the cross-section, excuse me, we ended the cross-section because there wasn't, there were no changes to it, but the floodplain does technically continue well past that as well. So the, the floodplain ends here, which is, that would be 400 West Edge. So let me zoom in on one of these profiles, so you guys get a better idea of what, what we actually show.
But you do have a culvert crossing the wetlands, correct? When you drive in?
We ha, we have a bridge, yes, so the, instead of a, so a culvert would have been a good option if either we were going to have some disturbance, some limited disturbance within the wetland, or if the crossing was not as wide. But this is about a 40-foot crossing, so we actually, we have a, a bridge essentially, and whether that, we've reached out to some precasters that make precast bridges, but whether it's an actual bridge or a box, large box culvert is to be determined. Some of the issues with the box culvert is we don't have enough cover over it, so it could, could end up being a, technically a bridge, but it's like a precast concrete bridge.
But would that have a weight, a weight limit?
It'll be designed for, you know, fire trucks, emergency vehicles, so there, it won't be limited to specific vehicles.
So, yeah, I noticed on the most recently submitted site plan, it still showed a culvert, so you haven't really gotten to a, a bridge design yet, so of course...
I believe it was changed to just crossing, let me see.
I think it's still indicating a culvert, maybe it's...
You are correct.
So of course, if that's the way you're going to be going.
Yes, so...
And that's, that was after a kind of lengthy discussion we had at the last time we met with the applicant team about why culverts are so much better than bridges.
Well, yeah, I mean, it boils down to, you know, you have two considerations essentially, you cannot have wetland disturbance here. So, spanning that wetland limits your options out of the gate, and then, secondly, well, I guess three considerations. Secondly, to the, you know, to the loading standpoint, you have to have something that is substantial enough to allow emergency vehicles to cross it, and then, third of all, the cost. So if you have the clearance, you know, a box culvert is going to be less expensive in just about any application than, than a bridge. So the bridge then becomes, you know, if you have certain limitations, such as that clearance, then that would, that would be the way you go. So we, like I said, we reached out to a manufacturer, there is a bridge that we know will work, but we're going to continue to try and track down a box culvert that will work as well, just to be, you know, as economical as we can. So, once we have that info, we have kind of the solution that we think is the best fit, we will be submitting details for that crossing, you know, at that point. But, yes, long, long story short, it will be a wetland crossing with, with no disturbance, and more to come. All right, so, I'm lost. Here, okay. All right, now, if this doesn't zoom too far, in business, here we go. All right, so everything left of this... So everything west or left of Station 100 here is going to be very, very boring to look at, so there's, there's no change to the floodplain, is essentially what that means. Everything here is just existing grade, will continue to be existing grade. Here's your center line of the channel, which is at Station Zero, and there's no change there. At 100 is where you see the grade step up in the proposed condition, so the proposed grade, for the most part, is going to be the top line, because as we all know, the, the site needs to be filled in order to get the building above the floodplain, for insurance reasons, for, for many reasons. The only place it's not the case is there's a little bit of a, you know, basically at grade, where the existing grade is higher to begin with. There's a couple little berms within the site, so a couple places where it's straddling that existing grade. But, within the main portion of the site here, you're going to see it steps up to the building elevation, which is at two feet above the floodplain, comes across, and some slight sloping down within the parking area, and then, beyond the parking area, comes back down to existing grade. Everything right of this point, which is at about Station 375, same story, you are beyond your disturbance area, everything existing is going to remain as it is, so there's, there's no impacts beyond that point. So really, you know, we were, we were struggling with trying to tell the story of the site. I mean, if you think about this from here to here, is essentially the grading plan. So if you look at the grading plan, that'll tell you the same story, is, you know, you're going to have a certain amount of fill that takes the, the project site, raises it up to keep it high and dry, and then everything else, the water course, the wetland, and Clove Creek is not touched. So then, everything beyond that is outside of the grading plan. So we, you know, we wanted to show what was going on at the site, but we also did want to tell, you know, show, demonstrate and illustrate, kind of give a feel for how large the floodplain is in, in the vicinity of this site, and how small the site is in comparison to that floodplain.
So you're bringing it up two feet? You're going to bring in two feet of fill for the whole building?
So the, the floodplain elevation is 111. The building is proposed at 113, and that's, you know, that's building code, is you're, you're required to be above the floodplain. That's two feet. The whole site's not at the floodplain elevation currently, so, you know, there's some undulation, so the actual amount of fill material varies throughout the site, depending what that existing grade is.
And you're not going to fill where the culvert's going to be?
What was that?
Are the culvert is going to be, or the bridge, whatever it is you're going to decide, is that going to need fill at that area?
At the abutments, at the ends, yes, but there won't be any fill underneath, because that would, that would result in disturbance, so...
Okay. All right, well, that was, that was a good overview. Why don't we, before we go around the board for questions, why don't we ask Mr. Bodendorf to go quickly through the CPL memo that's dated April 11th?
Sure, and a lot of these comments are carryovers from our initial review. Until such time that the applicant and the board agree on the, the site layout, and they proceed to a, a full package, site plan package, we won't really have any other things to comment on. We did review the floodplain analysis they submitted, we agree with their conclusions that it will basically be a drop in the bucket in terms of floodplain impacts. And the only other item I, I think is worth mentioning at this point is the, the Health Department memo, one of the comments said that the town should form districts in this area, so that's something we're going to have to follow up on, along with the applicant, but I think we'll be able to work through those, those issues as the project moves forward.
I think also the Health Department asked for verification of whether the, this water and sewer systems have adequate capacity, so of course, that's something...
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's an interesting history with the development of the site, so I'm not privy to it all at this point, but we'll figure it out as we, we go through the process. The only other item I would mention is comment number nine in our latest memo should have been deleted, I failed to do that, they did respond to the county planning review memo, so that will be stricken in our next iteration.
Although, if we recall, the county's response was that it was an incomplete submission at the time, back then, and so it'll be a, a whole new GMO submission at the point where all the new plans are submitted. One other thing, maybe I'll ask both the applicant and our engineer, just to respond to this from each of your perspectives, on why Health Department actual approval is no longer needed because of the change in the, previously an exterior pump station, which will be now an interior ejector pump. So, maybe first explain the difference between the two, and then, if both of you could just respond to why the interior ejector pump no longer requires Health Department review.
Do you want me to go first?
Go right in.
So essentially, as far as the DOH is concerned on, and any project, their, their jurisdiction is essentially whether or not you are a simple service connection, or if you are a service connection that's not a simple service connection, so a more involved service connection, if you will, or obviously like a, a full-on distribution system that you might have for a municipality, or for, you know, larger projects that have site-wide, creating system-wide improvements. So for this project, and their definition of that is essentially if you have a manhole on a sewer line, they would no longer consider that a simple service connection. If you have hydrants on your water line, they would no longer consider that a simple service connection. So it's essentially just a, you know, definition, if you will, of, of, of that service connection. The, and that's outside of your building, so between your building and your connection point is, is where they're looking at. The, so the... The, so the exterior pump station, in our case, was, because of the pump station, it was no longer a simple service connection. Same with the water line, with a hydrant there, not a simple service connection. So neither of those two things are proposed any longer. So DOH approval is not required, but like I said, their comments within their letter are still going to be addressed, they're just not going to be through a DOH approval, it'll be through the village, village approval and town review of the project.
Where was the hookups?
The hookups for both are at 600 Westage. There's like a landscaped island between 600 and 500, and it's within that island. There's a manhole there for the sewer, and there's a water main for the water. Those are both owned by Westage Maintenance Association.
And you're going to bring it in on the right away, on your driveway? Is that how you're going to be bringing it in?
Correct, yep. Yes, so the force main currently is proposed to run along the bridge, and the water main will be drilled under the bridge. There's just not enough room on the side for both.
When you leave your property... Right now, it's funny, because if you go into the Optum parking...
Yep.
And then, when you come out and you make a U-turn, and the road runs, I think the common road runs between...
Between 500 and 600?
Yeah.
Yes.
And where are you coming out? On the Optum side, or are you coming out on the road right itself?
So 500 comes off of the end of that main road, Westage Business Center Drive, and 600 is to the west of that. So technically, it's actually, let me just bring up the site line, but it's essentially through 600, and then you make a quick right here out of the site, and that's Westage Business Drive there.
So people have to make a little bit of a left, and then make a right, and then a left?
Well, this continues straight. This is Westage Business Drive, so you just have to turn, just go straight out and then to the right.
So, John, do you concur with the discretion we just had from the Health Department?
Yeah, I mean, it could change if the village requests certain improvements. I'm not sure that they would, but, like you said, the Health Department is still going to be involved in some capacity. It may just be on the town side, in terms of figuring out the best way to incorporate some of these properties into a district, or, you know, we're going through district consolidation at the town board level as well, so there's a number of things going on which I think will help solve some of the issues in this area. But I don't know, I don't have all the answers tonight.
And like I said, we did get a lot of documents from Westage on the 500 Westage review and approval from a number of years ago. So, you know, having just received them last night, I haven't been able to look through them, but hoping that will shed some light on, you know, it's my understanding that those comments that were made in the most recent DOH letter were essentially what was already looked at and addressed at that time. So, we'll just have to piece that information together, and then we'll get it over to you guys, and, you know, figure out how to get this connected.
Yeah, if that information could be shared with our office, too, sooner than later, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, let's go around the board and see if there are any comments or questions, and then I'd like to get the board reactions to the new suggested building size and configuration, so that we can pretty much decide if, you know, if we're comfortable with moving ahead with this particular version. Hope that wasn't anything, oh, that was your name tag.
Knock yourself off the table.
Knock yourself out, as they say. So, let's start down on this end. What do you think about generally the, so we have a new proposal for the building size and configuration, which is kind of the core, the key thing that we need to decide if it's all right to move ahead with that, so that we can see the rest of the project submissions that are going to be required?
My own personal view, Mr. Chairman, is that they've made some significant progress since the last couple of times we talked here. I'm very pleased about the seemingly minimal impact to the floodplain anymore, as demonstrated by some of the dissections here. And I think the comparison that this gentleman made to the other project was also helpful.
Yeah, the project, Route 9 project?
Yeah, the warehouse project, yep. You go through that.
I was not there in the prior review, so I have no comments on this one.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I went down and walked into the property, and I agree like what you're saying about the fill, and the, you know, you explained quite a bit about the floodplain and all the footprint, and I actually kind of like the new building and the signage and everything else. So, I think you guys have made a big step forward.
Thank you.
Hey, looks...
I agree, I think we're on a much better track than what we started with. I like the way it looks. Little concerned about the three signs, but that's a different thing. But, I think it looks much better than how we started. So, I think we're on the right track here. And I think they've done everything they can to minimize any impacts to floodplain, so they're doing everything that we've kind of asked them to do, and I appreciate that.
How about you, Anthony? And also, I know you were, you had voiced concerns about the floodplain situation, so maybe if you have any comments on that as well?
Yeah, I think the study was exactly what this board needed to see. I think it was a huge step in the right direction. In my opinion, I think the building is still too big for the site, but that's my personal opinion, but they've reduced the building again. They provided the study, which I think, the floodplain study, which goes, like I said, in a huge direction. I did have a question, has the Fire Department opined or provided any input on this?
So not on the record, technically so. We've, poor Chief Lucarella, we've actually gotten three letters from him now. And every time we get a new letter from him, we change the site plan, so. So we've gone back to him a few times. He has given us, I believe it was last week, his feedback on this last plan, so that will be submitted in the next round, but he has, he has no concerns at the moment. Just some, you know, requests for, you know, certain signage and striping, but that will all be on the site plan.
I guess I was more curious about the sites that are not accessible by driveway, of whether or not they feel that they can...
She wants to talk to you.
Oh, sorry. I'll take that comment back.
It's okay.
I'll retract it. That was all I had.
That's all right. I think you're much, much better than when you first came here. You solved a lot of the problems. I still think you got a few more to go, but that's nothing really major. And I agree with the signage. I don't think they're going to, you're going to hit that big signage, but...
I agree with the entire... Oops. I agree. That was what I was going to say, Anthony. You literally took the words right out of my mouth. Has the Fire Department taken a look at this? Because personally, I think the building is a little too big, and there doesn't appear to be access to get if there was, heaven forbid, God forbid, a problem. And, we all know problems happen, so...
Yeah, so they did take a look at the site plan. Combined, between hydrant access, aerial access to the second, third, and fourth floors with an aerial truck, and distance that they would have to traverse around the building, those factors combined, they're comfortable with the plan.
Because that one...
Oh, and the sprinklers, too.
Now, but the one corner looks like it's really close. I don't know how anything could even get around there.
Yeah, it is, it's definitely, it's definitely tight. The most access they have around would be on the side of the office there. We left, it's actually the turnaround for the fire truck, and then we left some open space between the trees shown there and the building itself, so that if they had, it's not like a fire lane, but if they had to get back, be, you know, behind the building on that side, they have some room there.
Just so you get a quick look at the plans, this building has fire suppression system?
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, well, it looks to me like the new revised building configuration also is going in the right direction. So it sounds like there were no objections from board members for the applicant to proceed with this current building configuration, and working out then all the necessary, you know, site plan and engineering details. So I'll assume there are no objections unless I hear one, but it sounded like everyone was okay with that. So, yeah, so there's, now we get to the fun part, now we'll need to look at all the details. I'm just going to reiterate a few of the things that I had already brought up several times, but now that it looks like we're going to be moving into detail work, I'll reiterate my request for a basic tree survey showing what types and sizes of trees are in the tree removal plan area, which was on the previous sheet, C150, so that's going to need some detail. And then the landscaping plan, I'll reiterate the request that we'd like to see some additional evergreen trees to be added to the plan, to provide more year-round buffering when the new plan set is submitted. And then also a proposed flow plan layout with the current building configuration. Lighting, yeah, I think we all appreciated the reduction in the proposed exterior lighting from the last iteration, and hopefully that will continue in the new one.
Yep.
So we'll need the new phonometric plan and full lighting fixture details and cut sheets for all that. So in addition to the building elevations you submitted, we'll need, you know, details of building materials, colors, textures, including a material sample board at some point when we move that along. And also signage details, so, yeah, if, especially if you're going to be submitting a variance request for the signs, we, and as only Board of Appeals, will need to see more detail on that. I guess some of us have suggested, and I think I agree, that if it's possible, they'll do away with a third sign and go back to the allowed signage areas on the building. That would be the best, but if you are going to submit for a sign variance, then we definitely will need to see the details.
Yeah, so we'll provide the additional signage details. I think our thinking there was essentially the, you can see this, the corner of the structure there, just based on the orientation that the building sits at to the rest of Westage, it's like trying to choose one side, wasn't an easy task. So, our thought was essentially to come right at the corner of the signage, it'll essentially act as one sign. I mean, now, it looks pretty separate, but I think once we provide the details, you'll see, it looks more like one sign that just happens to be folded at the corner. But we'll provide that, and then, you know, we can discuss that.
All right, and then, of course, all of the things that were mentioned in CPL's memo, the SWIP and all that stuff. And then again, so, the new submission should be submitted all in one package, so that we don't have to worry about the County Planning Department not accepting it and sending it back as incomplete again. That's, that just takes, you know, excessive time and causes delays in the process. And, so I think once we get, you know, a revised, complete submission package, we'll be able to start working on the seeker determination, and then start thinking about setting a public hearing, which we're still not quite ready for, because we need a lot of materials, but... Yep, so, again, the submission deadline for the May 11th meeting, if that's a possible target, is Wednesday, April 26.
Are we good with architecture by then, or? We will try, certainly try our best. I do agree, a full package is very important, so we'll try our best, and if not, we'll reach out to you and let you know how we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, let Debbie know how it's going, and as you get closer to the submission deadline. And, yeah, there have been so many pieces of things now submitted that, in order to keep track of it all, just to have everything back, you know, in one package would be good.
Yep.
All right, so any other questions for us?
I don't have any. Any, anything? Nope, we're good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
See you next time. Thank you. All right, well, that brings us to the regular agenda. I've got a few items to mention, other business. Actually, I could use a very short break myself, just to, as I said, I've been having allergies, so I want to just kind of stand up and get my blood circulating properly again. So it'll take like a five-minute break, if that's all right?
As long as I'm out of here by now.
Sounds good.
John, do I leave now?
Sorry?
Do I leave now?
Well, there are going to be a number of other business items before we get to the one that, you know, we accuse yourself on, so, you know, if you can, certainly stay around.
Right, I wasn't sure how this works.
Yeah, there are actually, I should have said more than a few, there are two, three, four, five, actually six items, but there, some are quicker than others, and none of them are too long.
You can't go whole day.
Sorry, stick around, Jody.
You're fresh, you're fresh.
Stick around.
So we're going to return at, was it 8:35?
8:35. So we are back in order, and we have several items under other business that I wanted to bring up. So first, I wanted to offer congratulations to Anthony Brozier, who was reappointed by the Town Board for a new four-year term, so...
He's clapping, he's not clapping.
Congratulations, we think.
No, I saw you at the meeting, John. Speak on my behalf, thank you, and thank you to the Town Board for reappointing me. Appreciate it. Proud to serve the town.
We need more people like you.
Yep, we are glad to see that you were reappointed. The next item is the Dutchess County Planning Federation training courses, which I sent around the email the other day, and I know a couple of you have already signed up for them, and I have, I signed up for two of them. I couldn't make the first one, but I'm going to do the last two.
And he's going to be good, you know, Ron Hicks is good.
Which one is that?
He's the one, he's the one you don't want to miss.
Well, unfortunately, I can't make it.
Do you want written responses, do you want written responses to this, or we just sign up?
No, I don't want, I don't, I don't want anything.
I'll have your certificate and your bill to me, and I'll take care of it.
Yeah, I just signed up, you know.
Yeah, it's always good to let Debbie know that you signed up, just so that she knows to expect the certificate. And I know if there's anyone who hasn't completed the training from last year, or so far this year, you... from last year, or so far this year, you certainly, this would be one to catch up a little bit on. Actually, there's a total of more than a required year's worth of training in the three sessions. I think there are a couple hours' worth at two of them, and, anyway, I don't know the exact numbers.
Seven and a half altogether.
Yeah. So, yep, sign up if you haven't already. So, the next item is the Town of Fishkill Draft Conference of Plan Update. Here's an update on the update. So, the public hearing was opened on April 5th, and there weren't too many comments. There were a couple of people who spoke, and then committee members were there and spoke. Liz Axelson has prepared a revised and reformatted draft of the plan with appendices, which the planning board just received today, the revised, the revised draft, which really is looking very nice. It's been reformatted so that the plan text itself is shorter now, because there used to be a lot of other stuff mixed in with the main text, so that's, some of those things have been separated out into appendices, like the survey results and things like that. So, it's good, it's easier to read, and then also photographs have been added to the text, making it more attractive and kind of easier, kind of breaks up the text a little bit. And those should be, if not already on, they should be put on the town's website. Now, the CPU committee met last night to discuss the remaining process for adoption of the plan, and further minor revisions to the draft plan. So, there will be some slight revisions still forthcoming, but that probably is gonna be the last committee meeting, don't you think, Ben? I don't think we even talked about setting another committee meeting up.
Did not set another one, but who knows?
Who knows, that's true. We had some interesting discussion last night, but I won't get into all the nitty-gritty details of it. And then the public hearing will continue at the town board meeting on April 19th, and the board will consider adopting the final generic environmental impact statement and the finding statement, which would complete the seeker process. And then, hopefully, the further revised plan will be ready for adoption by the board at one of the May meetings. So, we're almost there. So, we're moving along. The next thing I wanted to mention briefly was the Continental Commons tree cutting, which probably some of you have heard from people about. It, it definitely looks a lot different. It's, it's not a real pretty picture, but the board did authorize the tree cutting only in the Phase 1 areas at our March 9th meeting, and the areas that were supposed to be included in the cutting were shown on the tree clearing Phase 1 plan that was submitted by the applicant. So, I also understand that an permit for cutting was issued by the building department. I did visit the site after the cutting occurred, and it does appear to be consistent with what the applicant showed on the plan, the areas to be cut. Trees were filed and not removed from the site, which is according to the planning board's conditions, and it does appear that trees are remaining intact on the Phase 2 areas, as far as I could tell. I'm not a, didn't bring my surveying equipment out with me, but, you know, it looked, looked like it was pretty much in accordance with the plan. But, what I'm thinking is, and, you know, this is not the first site where tree clearing has occurred at, you know, various different stages of the approval process. I'm kinda thinking that we might wanna ask the town board to consider some code amendments dealing with tree cutting, especially for those applications that are, you know, before the board, 'cause we've had some issues with them, and probably a lack of clarity of how, how they should fit into the, the approval process. So, it wouldn't hurt. In fact, the CPU, the conference of plan update, also includes a recommendation to consider new tree preservation regulations. So, maybe we can come up with some ideas in conjunction with the conference of plan update, and, as well as based on our experiences with tree cutting for applications, and see if we could come up with some more specific closure procedures for how that would happen. So, that's something we can discuss at a future meeting. Certainly didn't intend to talk about that tonight, other than just fill you in on what I saw at the Continental Commons site, and move on from that. And if anyone else has had a chance to go out and look at them, at the site.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty overwhelming. So, anyway, what's that?
Trees are there, hundreds of years.
Well, some of them maybe, but a lot of them actually were, I would say, in the newer growth category. And interestingly, we learned throughout the approval process that, you remember about, what was it now, three or four years ago, when we had the terrible windstorm come through, and it ripped out trees from a number of areas? That site was particularly hard-hit. So, that probably gave the applicant some free tree clearing to some degree. But, yeah, I'm sure there were some significant trees in there. But, the, you know, the environmental review looked at that, and...
Yeah, given the, given the controversy surrounding the entire issue, this water-torture approach to approvals may not be helpful to the community.
I'm not sure. Say that again, I didn't quite catch what you meant.
If we, we continue to go drips and drabs for approvals, like leaving trees for a significant period of time, so that the community gets rankled by, by looking, having to look at that, it might be easier to just fast-track the approval process, if that's where we're going anyway.
Fast-track the approval process for tree cutting, or?
No, the entire approval process.
No, no, I...
Well, I mean, I'm just giving you the feedback.
If you had to clarify what you mean, but I'm reacting to that in a, like, what? Why, in order to deal with the tree clearing problem, which is what I brought up, why would you wanna fast-track development proposals? So, you can get to the tree clearing quicker.
No, that's not my point. My point is, from a community, my, my point is from a community point of view, for the community to have to look at the tree cutting, and those trees sitting there for an extended period of time, that's just one aspect of a, an approval process. And that just rankles, given the controversy surrounding this project, rankles, may rankle some, some elements of the community.
I'm sure it does.
So consequently.
That's why I wanted to bring it up in public.
To mitigate that in the future. Fast-track, pardon me if I'm using the wrong terminology here.
This is where I'm not making the connection. Maybe you should explain that more.
All right, so what I'm saying is, the next step, whatever that case may be, let's get to it.
Well, that's, it's not that easy.
I understand, I understand.
The, the question I have in my mind is, shouldn't we have some more clear, more specific tree removal regulations that will make it clearer what can and can't be done, so that perhaps in the future, we can come up with ways to not have a lot of trees cut down and left on the site, in order to just meet that, you know, seasonal deadline for the Indiana bat, in effect, is why that happened. Okay? So, fast-tracking development is not in my book. That's not where we're going. It's more, it's, it's almost the opposite. It's, let's come up with some newer, better regulations, so that these tree clearing incidents don't happen like this as often. And, you know, of course, we're stuck with the DEC's regulations on seasonal restrictions on cutting of habitats where Indiana bat may or may not be located, but could be located, and so we go through those with every project review. And several times, applicants have come forth at various different times of the approval process to ask permission to cut trees. A couple of times, it happened, you know, at different stages of the approval process. Sometimes, it happens after final approvals are given. I think that, I'm not as familiar with the Jehovah's Witness site, because I recused myself, but I think that's what happened with that one. That one received final approval, and they asked to clear trees before the March 31st deadline. I think, Dominic, you've given us some good information about, certainly during the seeker review process. While the seeker review is ongoing, seeker basically tells us not to allow sites to be, in effect, cleared or disturbed until the seeker process is complete. With Continental Commons, the seeker process was completed years ago, and preliminary approvals were granted, but final approval has not been granted yet, and the applicant for Continental Commons is presumably coming in for final approval, you know, fairly soon. I think they're trying to get things in order to come in for final approval. So, it's, it's sort of haphazard how we've addressed it, and that, I don't like haphazard things. I like things to be more orderly and clear, for clear-cutting especially. I like clarity for clear-cutting, okay? But anyways, I didn't, I didn't mean to jump on you, Kevin, but I just don't see the connection between fast-tracking, as you put it, and that probably wasn't the right word, but, anything implying that we should speed up a development process, and then just be done, clear the site, and then move on to construction quicker than we're doing. I think we usually do a pretty good job of getting things through the approval process. With Continental Commons, it actually took longer than most, because, largely because of the applicant's own submission process, and continually submitting new stuff every time we talked about an issue. It's been a whole new thing, and then it would keep going on and on and on. And so, they put themselves in, in the position of delays in their own right, and then, of course, court cases came up and further delayed it, and we have no control over those things. So, tried to give you a little more explanation of why it's not as simple as fast-tracking a development process, but rather, as I was indicating, trying to come up with some clearer, more specific.
I think what happens is, you know, 'cause, 'cause of the ongoing, I mean, this thing's been going for quite a while, about Continental Commons and everything else, and now it's coming to that point, and I think, you know, the public, you know, that area, going to shave and everything else, it's just part of Fishkill's, I, for me, it's a historical look of Fishkill and everything else, and so I guess, with everything kinda being in the air, and, like, they're not, they're not at final approval, like, the rush to cut down, and I think it just took people by, you know, just kind of shocked them, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I, I get it, you know, there's, there's the, what legalities and the codes and everything else, but I think it's just, it riled up, I think, a lot of the public, 'cause like, I can't tell you many people called and asked, you know, and they said, "Did you see what they did?" And I said...
Yeah, I mean, I, I just empathize with the, not necessarily the content of the comments at the town board meeting, but with the frustration expressed. So...
Yep. And I, I do, you know, I empathize with the, the town's residents and the public who drive by that site, and they will see the trees down for, you know, quite some time, until final approvals are given and construction starts. But, yeah, that was a very controversial project, and it survived, you know, several litigations, so we, we are where we are, and it is what it is. But, I do think there are some things we can do in the future to try to minimize the disturbance aspects to sites through some kind of tree regulations and cutting. There's actually a very simple, one-page local law that the town of Wapanger adopted that covers that very situation, and does include some more specific standards and guidelines for how that process should occur. So, maybe that's one to look at first, before we get into, you know, bigger tree preservation regulations, which I think might help the town as well, but, so, anyway, something to think about, again, for the future, not to discuss anymore tonight. So, so here's another item that I wanted to just quickly mention the possibility of, and this has to do with Liz Axelson from CPL mentioned that her commitments with another planning board on the second Thursday of each month may have been freed up, and I've, I've spoken with Liz in the past, and when she contacted me, suggesting the possibility that maybe she could work a little bit more with our planning board on some applications, seems like a, a good possibility. So, she's available and interested. Of course, a number of things would have to be worked out in terms of how that would work, and how many, and what types of applications she would, she might be able to work with us on. You know, she's already working on, she has worked on several with us, including the Route 9D self-storage facility, and I think she, she does a very good job. So, if there's any way we could have her involvement a little bit more often on some of the more complicated applications, I think that would be great. So, I think, you know, I just wanted to mention that as a possibility, and see what the members thought about it, if, if that should be able to happen.
Think that'd be a benefit to us, so...
I agree. I agree.
If I could just add, I'm not sure the board is aware, obviously Liz has been here for a couple meetings for the 9D project, and maybe some others.
Yeah, the cell tower on 9D.
Cell tower, right. But regardless, pretty much every application, new application that comes in gets at least some level of a planner's review within CPL. It may not be Liz. We have other people who are a little less experienced, but they're still qualified to, to look at stuff. So, especially regarding, like, seeker materials and zoning, you know, overall zoning review.
Right.
So, there is somebody looking at that kinda stuff. Takes a little bit of burden off me, but, yeah, Liz is very good at what she does.
Yeah, and I think I remember even one where she wasn't helping us through a complete application. I think you had asked her for some, you know, planning assistance on one of the other applications. I can't remember which one it was, just on a less, you know, formal but in-house type of a basis, where she's able to provide that kind of input sometimes. But if we can get her to do a little bit more formalized, and, you know, what, what that would mean in terms of the current contract that the town has with CPL, I think we would need to look at that as well. In fact, it may or may not require some additional approvals by the town board. So, Debbie, you don't think it would?
Now, I spoke with the town controller, the senior plan is already listed as part of the contract, so...
Yeah.
So, you mean that all we have to do is, this board has to authorize her to do something?
You have to refer an application, or upon acceptance, like we do with everybody else?
Yeah, so we, we could figure out a, you know, a com- Yeah, so we could figure out a, you know, a communication basis and since, of course, we're fortunate to have John working with us, it makes it all that much easier to have some communication and coordination kind of on a more, a more ongoing basis. So I'll be doing a little bit more checking into it and, you know, I'll report back to the board, but I think it, it might be a good opportunity and we'll see where that goes. So we have reached number six of six other business items. So this, I don't know exactly how much I should or will say, but this has to do with the Healy Hyundai site construction and some possible issues that have been going on with that.
Okay.
So if you would like to recuse yourself, Jody, you certainly may go home and enjoy some TV or.
Come watch us.
Yeah, go home and watch. Now hopefully we'll be out of here by the time you get home.
I live right down from Red Dog.
So just drive very slowly.
I'll drive super slow.
Good night. Thanks, Jody. And Dominic, you can interrupt me if it sounds like I'm going, straying into waters that I shouldn't be treading into, but I'm going to try to keep this on a somewhat general level. But I also wanted to talk about this in public session because there's some stuff that I think the public, you know, should know about.
Well, if, if I may, you know, I would caution you, first of all, these are items that are being discussed tonight that weren't specified on the agenda.
Right.
And I'm referring in particular to two applications. One, you know, for Healy Hyundai, which has been approved and is now under construction, but Continental Commons, which is also still before the board. And I would just caution the board in general that a discussion regarding an applicant, especially a pending project before the board without the applicant present, could lead to a claim by the applicant that the board has not given the applicant an opportunity to appear before them, hear concerns and, and address them. So if there was potential future litigation, you know, that could be an element that, that an applicant could bring forward. So that's why whenever possible, you know, discussions regarding a particular application should take place with the applicant being present. Healy Hyundai, I believe, falls into a different category to some extent that the project is already approved and this board's oversight of that project was during the application process, from my perspective. But I understand that there may be differing opinions or more nuanced discussion in connection with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think even with the Continental Commons project, although they, they have not gotten final approval yet, this was, the discussion was about a specific approval, or I don't know if you'd even call it an approval really, but authorization to do the tree cutting. And that was a specific thing where a permit was issued through the building department and it was done and according to the plan that was submitted. So I, I don't see any problem with that one. With Healy, yeah, I think that is a totally different category, which received all approvals and has been under construction for quite some time. And, you know, I think there have been a lot of things discussed by residents about that site, the construction, where there have been some potential issues that have been raised. So again, I don't want to get too specific on all this, but the basic thing is the retaining wall situation, where the retaining wall was apparently built higher than the approved plan showed it. So again, Dominic, if I, if I stray too far into dangerous waters, let me know. But I'm trying to keep this without any accusatory tones or blame or anything like that, but simply trying to say what appears to have happened and what some potential fixes or solutions to future problems might be able to be worked out. So tonight is my night for working out future solutions as opposed to necessarily looking back at problems, but sometimes future solutions stem from past and current problems. So, so anyway, it was discovered that the retaining wall was built too high according to the approved site plan and a notice of violation was issued by the building department. Now normally in the past, a project sponsor would have to come back to the planning board to submit an application to the board to request a site plan modification or amendment to in effect reauthorize some site element that may not have conformed to the site plan. So first of all, that has not happened yet anyway. Whether it would happen or not, I don't know. But the question has also come up as to whether this kind of situation could be dealt with as a minor field adjustment by the building department. And if that is, is true, and if that is what's happened, I, I think that could be a problem for future project applications in general, not just with this particular application. So, and who knows how many times that might have happened in the past, actually. So it's not clear really what has happened because there really hasn't been very good documentation throughout this process, as far as I can tell, about what's been happening with this issue. So current provisions actually in the town code do require construction to comply with an approved site plan. I don't think there's any question about that. And basically also that any changes must go back to the planning board for approval. Now, we also need to make sure our resolutions are clear. And we, and this used to be a pretty standard provision as a condition in our resolutions that said basically all elements of the site plan shall be constructed as shown on the approved plan, even though the code says that. But we've, we've made a practice of putting into our resolutions and that any modifications during and after construction that are not consistent with the plan must be submitted to the planning board for consideration of approval. And that's, that actually, it's worked well in the past. There have been a few where we have seen such applications come in. Not a lot, but yeah, I don't know if you can remember Debbie, like over the past 10 years.
We've also seen some people come back to notify, it's been a while, but people did come back to notify the board of a field change because of whatever the site, you know, restrictions might have been at the time. It's been a while.
And that's another, that's another point, I think a good one to bring up, is that regardless of whether or not it should or shouldn't come back to the planning board, may be debatable or up to interpretation. But, so number one, I think it should be clarified under code that there is no interpretation of that, that it, it happens. Where there are legitimate minor field modifications, I think it's, that communication and reporting of such to the planning board is important. And I don't think that's really happened in this particular case that I brought up. So, you know, this process is hard enough as it is when you try to do things according to the code and do things right, and that's really what the planning board does. But when things outside of the planning board's direct control, after going through an approved site plan happen, I think that's something that we should be concerned with and I think it's something that the town board should be and I think is concerned with. So, so at any rate, another thing is the function and process of stop work orders that are issued by the building department. I think that needs to be clarified a little bit because how those are supposed to work, I don't think is necessarily clear, certainly not to me. And as chair of the planning board, you would think that, you know, I should know and as all planning board members, I think all planning board members should know how that process And again, communication as to how that works, I think is important. So anyway, I think maybe another thing we might need to ask the town board to consider is amending town code language to make this, this whole process of follow-ups to approved site plans crystal clear. And just generally speaking, I, I strongly feel that the building inspector maybe has too much discretionary authority on things that really have gone through the planning board. This is my own personal feeling and this is, you know, so if I get into trouble for saying this, that's fine. I don't really care because I, I feel strongly about it. And I think it's important to make sure that that process is very clear and done in a, in a realistic and practical way so that everybody knows what's happening. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. So I don't know if, if others have heard about this issue or have your own thoughts about it, but it's been going around town and I'm sure a lot of people have heard about it. And I just wanted to say to the residents out there, and I know a lot of residents are concerned about it, I think there's more that could be done to try to fix these kinds of situations. So that's it for me for tonight. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything to that.
I, I would, Mr. Chairman. So I, I think when we look at this situation, we're not, I'm not talking about any project in particular, but the question should be, well, what constitutes a minor field change? Right?
Yeah.
Because that's really the crux of it, right? Because if it is a minor field change, we don't really need them to take another month or two to come back to us and waste maybe two, three months going to us over something that's small. But then the question is, what is a minor field change? And how do we quantify it? And also, I mean, it could be tons of things. How can we put it in code easily to be able to kind of wrap our arms around everything that could possibly happen? And then the question does become, who has that, and right now the building inspector does, who has that say as, is this a minor field change or not? And do we want to step on that or not? Because maybe we have to be careful, somebody's going to have to make those decisions, right? And it can't be, I, we have to look at it on the other side, the applicant is doing something and if there's a small change, we don't really want them to come back to us. But then of course the question then becomes how far, how much power does the planning, you know, the building inspector have? But I, I don't know how to easily do that because I know you talked about maybe changing some code stuff. That's, this is not easy.
No, I know.
Yeah, this because it's, there's so many things. Just talking about that wall, it went from 10 to 15 feet. So is that a minor change or not? I don't know. It's 50%. We could look at it percentage-wise, but maybe in the context of this project, maybe it's not a big change. I, you know, these are small, these are things that maybe the engineers, everybody else would be able to know a little bit more. But, you know, every project's going to have their own situations. And almost no project, I think, is going to be exactly built the way we put it on, on the plans. So there's always going to be some sort of changes, but the question is how to quantify that. So I don't know how to easily do it. I, I know what you're trying to do and I agree, but I'm not sure how to easily do that.
Yeah, I don't either. I thought you would help us.
No, 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 no. I wanted, I wanted more uncertainty, you know? Take the clarity away.
No, I, I think you're absolutely right. And it is, it is a difficult thing to quantify, but I think if a number of us put our heads together, we probably could come up with some pretty good guidelines and suggestions to the town board if it, if it actually went that way.
We've had a couple of projects. We had the hotel, right?
Yep.
Was that a minor change or was that a major change?
Well, that was.
The building was bigger than the foundation.
That's one that did come back to us through a site plan modification.
Back to the former engineer.
And what was the result? I don't see the building going down.
Well, they came in front of, I don't want to speak out of term, but they came in for amended site plan and they already had a TCO.
Again, you know, I'm saying, what can you do?
But in, in that case, that I assume that the TCO was issued with a condition that they had to return to this board, right? Or was it not? No?
No, that was basically brought up by our then engineer.
Site inspection by the former town engineer, final site inspection.
Well, that's a good point. That's another thing I forgot to mention is that since we have excellent engineering services from, through John and CPL, I think another thing that would help the situation that we're talking about is perhaps some better communication and coordination from the building department with the engineer, as was beginning to happen with our, you know, previous engineer. But that was, our previous engineer, you know, sounded like he was regularly out at sites during the whole construction process at various times. I don't know Debbie, if you have any observations on that?
I can only speak from the past, it's been a while, but when, I don't know what the processes in the building department call in the engineer for that inspection, but there used to be coordination at a certain time, even if it was at a final time, a memo would be issued by the former engineer to the building department and CC, myself, so that communication was given to the planning board as to whether a final CO was ready to be issued, if there were any changes out in the field that required them to come back to the planning board. That was something that went to Joel or the former building inspector that was lead at the time, CC the planning department and then the planning board. That's how the communication was to get across to the planning board.
So why isn't it done now?
I have no idea.
Why isn't that a standard operating procedure?
Well, maybe John, you could tell us how it is done or how it isn't done.
Well, certainly Joel will call our office when a project is essentially complete to do a final inspection. Certain projects in the town, we do do periodic independent inspections, but other minor projects, like small subdivisions, we typically don't get involved with those. It's, it's really the site development plans that, such as the one across the street. We have been doing regular inspections there, basically weekly, but unfortunately that wall thing was caught after, you know, we didn't realize that it was being built higher than what was approved until it was already done. So, but going forward, you know, it, it would be nice to have more direct communication between our office and the building department to, so that if things like that come up and we, we haven't been informed, then we can get involved earlier and make the proper decisions, if, if any are necessary.
What other towns do?
It depends. Some, some towns want their consultants or their, their inspectors there regularly, whether it's once a week, twice a week. it's once a week, twice a week. I don't know what the previous engineer did.
It was on and on call. Well, most recently before you were hired in, and he was gone, he waited for a call from Joel. And I don't, I don't know when that happens. I can only speak to the one next door at that time, just as an example, because I was involved with that. He called me from the site because it was a final inspection we just called in on.
Yeah. And that's essentially how we had been operating, but it may be beneficial, especially with some of these larger projects that have been approved within the last year or so, that we have more regular involvement. I mean, we do, the town takes a site inspection fee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if we were going out there on a weekly basis, I don't think we would ever come close to expending the entire fee that's taken in. So there is funds to cover stuff like that. It's just, it's never really been conveyed to us what, how often we should be doing these things. And, you know, it may be worth having a discussion with the building inspector and the supervisor and, you know, have a, some planning board representation at the meeting as well.
So it looks like there is a solution. It's just have to be implemented.
Right. But, you know, getting back to, you know, one of the questions that, that you guys were bouncing around, what constitutes a minor field change? That's a, that's a tough thing to answer, and I don't think you can put something in writing that, that would cover everything. You know, it's, it's really a case-by-case basis.
But if you guys are out there inspecting it, you at least have a good idea.
Oh, yeah.
So, and most of the time, it can be done before the fact, as opposed to after the fact, we did it and forgive us.
Or we did it and it will come down to the size it was supposed to be. I keep referring to a famous case in New York City where a skyscraper was built several stories too tall. And after much turmoil and litigation, the city building department made those two tall stories go away. So if, that's an extreme situation, but it can happen.
Let me ask you, and it's just on this wall, and I don't care where the wall is. If something does happen, can the building department say, take it down? Down to where it should be?
It's impractical.
Yes, I think they could.
So why?
Well, that gets to the heart of, I mean, the building department and the building inspector is code enforcement officer. He has discretion, and he has discretion whether or not to enforce, you know, for a potential variation or not. You know, and so, and that's, he's, that discretion lies entirely with him. And in this case, the, you know, he had options. One of them would have been an order to remedy where something was so substantial or in a deviation from the approved plans that the building inspector, in his opinion, felt that it should have been remedied. Or in this case, my understanding from the emails is that the building inspector deemed it to be a field change, which he also has the discretion to do. So that's, but that drives to the heart of it.
What's the difference between a field change and an engineering change, an EC?
A field change is, you know, based on conditions in the field and what was constructed. The building inspector says this is deemed to be a field change because it's different than the approved plan set, but it's acceptable, and it won't be flagged as an item that would prevent them from getting a certificate of occupancy to occupy the space.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because an engineering change usually has a defined process associated with it, and it requires the engineer to go back involved, get back involved in a defined project and make the necessary changes.
I believe that there were revised engineering plans that were presented to the building inspector.
Okay. So my perspective is that if there's an engineering change, then from a communication point of view, it makes sense to get engineers involved. And so somebody from a process point of view could, there'd be a reg that says if there's an EC in the field, then John's team as a representative for the board gets back involved.
Well, the thing is, is that, you know, the town already has code provision that says the changes to the approved plan, and it's already in the town code. Whether it's in the resolution or not doesn't, in my opinion, really matter because the code is there and it's a code provision. It's, it has the effect of law. It is law. Now, but the question, it still reverts back to the fact that the first person that gets to interpret whether or not something is substantial and either needs to be remedied, either by, you know, changes in the field or an amended plan that would reflect the deviation, that the first line of interpretation, and I think the only line of interpretation is the building inspector.
And that seems to be subjective.
Right. This board is not an enforcement board. You don't have enforcement powers. You can't write to someone and say, you know, you put up something that was not consistent with our approved plans, and so now you must come back. It's simply, I mean, there's no board, there's no planning board in New York State that has enforcement powers.
Just curiosity of, like you said, the code, whatever, what, is there something that has to be met to be able to have the deviation from the site plan? Some kind of hardship, some kind of thing? Or is it just, hey, we just want to do it this way?
I mean, you know, it's, it's, you think-
I mean, obviously-
No, I understand. If you think of the, of the code enforcement officer, building inspector is, he's, he's an enforcement officer. And you may get pulled over for speeding. I'm not using particular, but any one of us could get pulled over for speeding. And you might get let off with a warning. You might get written a ticket for not speeding, you know, or, you know, or any sort of things could happen as a result of that. But that's in the discretion of the officer who pulled you over. And the building inspector isn't an officer. He has a certain amount of enforcement discretion that, that he gets to exercise as a result of his position.
And I just, because I'm just thinking that, you know, we have things about high codes of, you know, fence, and someone decides to make a double high fence.
Yeah.
And then they find out after, and then it's, it's given some kind of approval, then it sets kind of a little bit of a precedent, doesn't it?
It does. And this is not to say that the town couldn't make changes to its code as, as the chairman suggested. There may be a threshold, you know, that could be established that says, you know, for any deviations beyond a certain percentage, you know, it's not really a matter of discretion anymore, and the application does have to. There certainly is options there, as the code is currently written, in my opinion. And of course, I'm just seeing this from the emails that, that have gone back and forth. I'm not directly involved with anything. And I know that town attorney, Mr. Gaba, has also obviously been interacting with the town board because there have been concerns brought to the town board's concern as well. So I think, you know, moving forward out of this, there is certainly the option for the town board to consider establishing criteria or thresholds to, to make it clear.
So you're saying the town board should establish it, not us?
We can't do it. Right. This is not a legislative board. You can suggest, you know, either as a private citizen or as a board, like, you know, it's certainly common for boards, like I represent one board where the board doesn't have the ability to waive public hearings on lot line changes. And so they've requested to their town board, say, please, we have to have a public hearing on every single lot line change, even when it's just to fix the fact that someone's fence, you know, got constructed two feet over, and now the neighbors are very happy, and they're happy to work it out, and they want to move their property line because the fence is on the wrong side of the line. And those applications require three months of processing because they've got to appear once, and then they've got to have a public hearing, and then they've got to come back in for approval. And it takes time and money. So that board, you know, said to the town, please, like, make this change. This board, if you'd like, you know, could authorize the chairman, for instance, to send a letter to the town board that says, this is a concern that we have. We would like you to consider a legislative change that would perhaps provide greater clarity in these kinds of situations moving forward.
Jonathan, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for input from you guys, and I'm getting it. So I think that's, I think the purpose of the discussion has been, at least in part, served. I don't think it's an easy thing to solve.
I didn't hear that.
But I think there are things that could be done to help improve the process, and we've talked about several of them. Communication and coordination, possible code amendments.
We have four or five major projects going on. Whatever you call a major, and I call anything other than a subdivision or something, a major project. I mean warehouses, firehouse, gas station.
Self-storage.
We have one or two of those. I mean, just call them.
So, yeah, I didn't intend to get any answers tonight, and I think it was a good discussion, and I think we should all think about it some more and think about ways that we can improve the situation for town residents. That's my bottom line.
We have projects that we have approved that haven't, you know, going through yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I could ask the hypothetical question. How many projects have we approved where field changes have been made, whether minor or major, that we weren't even aware of? Because we're not the ones that go out and inspect the sites, which is again why I think a reporting mechanism of some sort would be important.
Years ago, we used to, even if it was a handwritten note, it was just a, you know, periodic inspections.
And maybe if, if our engineer has a, you know, a more set or established arrangement for when engineering inspections are done in coordination with the building department, we could get reports, you know, from CPL on that. Wouldn't have to come from the building department necessarily. It could, but it-
Yeah, we, we actually have been writing up very brief field inspection reports for, for certain sites, and we typically send those to the supervisor and the building But we could expand that. I mean, if, you know-
Yeah, that's something to think about.
Yeah. I'm familiar with approval process requirements depending on the size of engineering changes associated with projects. So traditionally, you know, if you've got an EC that's big, a million dollars, half a million dollars, whatever the case may be, there's an approval process that says it goes up to a certain level. Something like that is not unusual. But the communication needs to be there.
So I think there are a number of ways of putting some new pieces together that might help the overall situation. So we'll work on it. And if anybody has any other ideas, let us know. You know, we can have another discussion sometime in the future on this, if you want. But I think for tonight, I'd like to go home soon.
Motion to adjourn?
So, yeah, that was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Let's vote with our feet and walk out of here.
Still have one pool water.
Thanks, everybody.